Any other questions, Ms. Banks?
Mr. Chair, I do have a question that was brought up from a few of us. Are these going to be rented or are they going to be sold?
We have not ruled out either possibility at this point in time. They are, as we said, they're designed and aimed for senior living. And we are not going to rule out what kind of economic circumstances senior residents might come and want to, or be in position to utilize for these units. If, whether it's going to be their, they have plenty of 401K money left, or if they're all out and they need someplace that's going to be a high-quality maintenance-provided project. The key component, I think, that you should focus on with regard to that is that it will not be dependent upon, as I said before, who's living inside the unit to take care of the outside of the unit. They will all be maintained in the same manner. They will all, all the painting, all the roofs, all the yards, landscaping, gutters, will all be taken care of by the association, regardless of who's living inside the unit.
But I gather then you're going to have Home Association dues-
Oh, yes.
-that the tenant or the owner will pay paying?
The owner, in all instances, would have to pay.
Okay, since you're focusing on senior living, are you going to have age restriction?
We are not going to restrict it to 55 and over or 65 and over exclusively, no. We're not going to do that by deed restriction.
So anyone, so you're not going to have it really focused towards senior living so much?
We're designing the units, as I said, with the master on the main level and two-bedroom units, which is not conducive to a family situation. If we have a third bedroom, it'll be downstairs. So by design, we're aiming it at senior living. But again, we're not going to restrict that by deed restriction. And it won't be if, if a family comes in with maybe one child, or a three-person family, or a two-person family, they just don't, maybe in their 40s, in their 40s or 30s, they won't be restricted from living in that subdivision, no.
So you're just accommodating in the case someone that's senior wants to live there, but you're focusing it just basically on a duplex. So I don't know whether using the senior to help try to get it through, because if it's not going to be geared towards seniors, then it's just duplexes that are, would accommodate seniors?
They will accommodate seniors, yes. We're not, I don't believe we're getting any special preference by calling it senior. That's what our marketing has shown us, will be attracted, senior residents will be attracted by this type of project on a cul-de-sac with only 22 units. Smaller units, maintenance provided. They're not big, they don't have to take care of anything. They're small enough that they don't have to do a lot on the inside either, so-
And are they going to be ABA accessible then on the main level if you're gearing it, you're wanting to gear it towards seniors?
Well, we have not looked into whether it's going to be disability accessible. We're not, we have not targeted it to a disabled community strictly senior living. So in answer to your question, no, we haven't done anything in that regard.
Well, I'm just talking about like wider door frames, handrails-
We have, we have not, no, we have not designed it in that fashion, no.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, Mr. Abbott?
Chairman, I've got a couple of questions. First of all, so all the units will have basements, is that correct?
No, they will not all have basements.
Some will be on slab?
Some will be on slab, yes.
Okay, too, also, have you met with the homeowners' association of the subdivisions surrounded at to see what their feelings are about having significantly smaller residents next to theirs?
Well, as I put in my report, and as I mentioned to you, we are the original developers of Parkway Estates, and that subdivision has had its own history. But at this time, in the surrounding homes, there's a handful of occupied homes, maybe a dozen or so to the north, that have, but the 99 homes that are, the 99 lots, the vacant lots that are surrounding this project, there's no occupied, there's no homes. And then across the street, on the east side, another builder, Celine Homes, has gotten that side of the project started and going. There's about seven occupied homes in there, but the Homes Association is in infant stages, so-
Yeah, I was more concerned about the Parkway Homes there, but-
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Have you done anything as far as actually go out and look at the trees that are there that you're looking at trying to save and everything else, you know, without walking through it and everything else? My impression has always been those are kind of, just kind of scrubbed trees and everything else is not really any quality there, I don't-
You're correct to the greatest extent. There are, however, in that 25-foot buffer, there are some nice, very mature, very large trees to preserve. It's not going to be a wall that you can't see through, obviously. And on the, on the rest of the project, there are a lot of thorn trees, and it's just, it old, this is an old farm, been there, as many of you probably know, for forever, before we purchased the ground originally. So there, there are a lot of scrub trees, there are a lot of thorn trees, but there are also several mature valuable trees that are worth preserving. And we think there's enough of them in that extra 25-foot buffer to make it worthwhile to try it.
Thank you.
I do have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Looking at the rendering we saw, as far as what the elevation drawing of these proposed villas are going to be, they, it illustrates them as one-car garages?
That's correct.
And so reducing the setbacks naturally reduces the distance for the driveway.
Mm-hmm.
I guess a concern is, is when you do have these type of, some residents may have more than two vehicles, and therefore you get a situation of people parking on the street, get too many vehicles parked on the street, there's a concern then for emergency vehicles getting through there.
Right. The, out of the 11 buildings, there are only two with a reduced setback. So the other 11 will have a single-car garage and 30-foot setback, so enough for two cars in the driveway and one in the garage. On these two particular lots with a 19-foot setback, we'd have one car space in the garage and one on the driveway. If you look at the, what, who we're marketing the project to, who we believe will be living there, we don't believe we're going to get families. We have smaller units. Again, in some instances, two bedrooms, which would all lean towards producing fewer cars. It's not to say that that won't happen, but all the indicators and the design, the concept of the project would lead to less cars per unit.
Any other questions or comments? Okay.
Okay, thank you for your time.
And now we'll bring it out to the public, and I will remind the public, the two public hearings are on the rezoning and the PRO district, not on the plating. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of either of those two issues? Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak against either of those two issues? Would you come forward, please? You'll have to be sworn in.
He's our supporter of the testimony box, gave his case to the truth of the item.
I do.
Your manager.
Philip Leslie, 1004 Southwest Skyline Drive, Blue Spring, Missouri, 64015. Thank you. I'm currently building a home, or will be a future homeowner of Parkway Estates. I have a lot of issues with this plan, it concerns me very much so. I've been looking for a subdivision for some time. I don't like multi-housing. I don't want to be next to multi-housing of any kind. I don't care if it's a duplex, or townhomes, or apartments. This area didn't have that in there. This tract, as we all know, was previously neighborhood commercial. I know it may sound odd, but versus regular rental property, I'd rather have a subway or a small convenience store, or something like that on the corner than rental property. If, we've all, a lot of you brought this up, and I couldn't agree with you more, senior housing, I am not against senior housing. If we have deed restrictions and guarantees, this actually will be for 60-plus, 65-plus residents. If this is truly geared toward senior housing, it is the only multi-housing that I am for, and the only multi-housing in this area that I believe in. Whether it's rented, or whether it's owner-occupied, doesn't necessarily bother me, as long as it is deed restricted, or whatever terminology we need to guarantee that it is senior housing for 60 or 65-plus, the age that you, they would, they would pick around in that area. I do kind of agree, it's been brought up, there's a little bit of too many units in the area, but my main concern is, I'm just absolutely against it being even rezoned unless we have some guarantee that it is for senior housing, because we, you've all brought it up, numerous members have, right now there isn't. They can build it for all they want, and they can design it and market it for seniors in mind, but anyone is allowed to move in, and I don't want that kind of rental property in that area. And I'm building a very nice home, and if they, you know, a lot of money and a lot of time to do this, and this does not fit that style and that development, or the Parkway for that matter, in my opinion, if it's just normal rental property. So again, that, just against it unless we have guaranteed that it's senior housing. And that's the only things I have to say.
Are there any questions for this witness? Can you tell me, I assume you already have a lot picked out?
I do.
How, where are you in proximity to this?
I'm going to be over in Bluebird, so I'm actually on this side of Adams Dairy Parkway, but I'm going to be two streets up to the north of this. I do have, you brought up an interesting point, Chairman, if I can. I, I believe Mrs. Banks brought it up. They said there's really no buffer that's going to be between the existing lots, as you can see on the, on the, on the west and the north. Is that true? Is there going to be trees, trebery, some kind of fence, something that divides this from the rest of the Parkway Estates, or just the space that's, you know, provided behind the homes? I would urge that there be some kind of, if, you know, especially if it's senior housing, that there'll be some kind of landscaping restrictions that does buffer this, or separates this a little bit better than the future homes, they're going to butt up against this. I, of course, purposely never chose a lot anywhere near this, because I knew that, you know, you never can guarantee what's going to go in there, but I don't know if that can be done or not.
There currently isn't any kind of landscaping or fence requirement, but it is something that we have included in the past on some of these things where there's a zoning change, so, yeah.
But mainly I'm just against it unless it's senior housing, I just do not want any kind of multi-housing in the area. I don't think it fits the overall concept and plan of the community, and I think it would downgrade my values of my home and the Parkway Estates in general.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak against these proposals? I will bring it back up here for comments on the record.
Yeah, that's a, that's a very nice area out in there. You drive out in this area, there's nothing in there now, but you can see, you know, it's designated for some pretty quality, quality homes out in there. I don't, I'm not, I would be upset if I had a lot out there, and I knew a guy who's going to, could build a deck within 20 feet of the property lines, that would bother me. You know, I just, I don't like the layout.
Mr. Allen, or Mr.- Is it possible for us to put a fence restriction or something like that in there that would, would separate those two, the two properties?
I'm sorry, which, Mr. Allen, are you addressing?
You.
Okay. All right. That's certainly something that could be considered, again, it'd be part of the PRO concept plan. The rezoning does not have conditions on it, other than with that PRO designation in particular, so. That's certainly something that could be looked at, much like on the east side along Adams Dairy Parkway, there's a 25-foot separation and so on and so forth.
And, and what about-
I'm also referencing the other Mr. Allen in that, I'm not sure if he has any comments regarding that as well.
And what about the comment that was made about deed restrictions? Where would that be included if there were to be such a thing?
We don't have anything that would allow us to force the property owner to do that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have one, I have a comment also.
Yes, Mr. Abbott.
If this was really truly senior living, I wouldn't have too much problems with it, because, again, if I was one of those property owners on the other side, you know, if I knew it was owned commercial, I would have accepted that when I bought the lot. But if I already bought the lot and they're changing on me, I would be concerned. But again, I'd feel more comfortable if it was really geared toward senior living, which, and I don't think it really is. Plus, an 800-foot slab home is really small, especially if it's a duplex.
It's 800 per side.
800 per side?
Yeah, 800 per side.
Well, 1,600 still, I mean, that's on a slab is still, to me, pretty small. But, I mean, I've been, every time we talk about Adams Dairy Parkway, I always get concerned when you start putting in duplexes. We've done that in the past, and so far, I think it's really broad downhill, but that's my opinion.
Well, Mr. Chairman, my concern is that it was brought as if it was senior living, focused toward that, but it's not really. So there's no really age restrictions, that it's maybe for rent, maybe for sale, and then with the parking situation, as Chairman Trozen, I mean, Commissioner Trozen brought up, so I'm not quite sure if I'm satisfied with the, with the proposal. I just have some concerns.
I think it's close. There's just a couple of things I'd see different.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Trell.
I, I do have a question to staff, and maybe I need a little bit more clarification on it. In reviewing the staff report pertaining to the zoning, it talks about the comprehensive plan designating the property as, as neighborhood commercial. So now we're looking at changing that zoning from what is now consistent with the comprehensive plan to a residential classification. And so I'm trying to understand, you know, you know, we work very hard on these comprehensive plans, we work very hard on these Adams Dairy overlay plans, I'm just trying to understand the justification to then change the zoning to a residential when the comprehensive plan designated as a neighborhood business.
In Missouri, you can do that without changing the comprehensive plan? If there's some reason that you think, if you're asking the, what the particular reason is, one reason possibly is, it's not working out as, as a commercial. I'm not saying that's a reason you have to change it either, but, I mean, that would be one, one reason.
Can you- I know we haven't finished it yet, but we do have the comprehensive plan under review right now. Do we have any idea whether this neighborhood node idea is still going to be incorporated in the new plan?
We just had that discussion, actually, last week with the consultant, in terms of, I think we call it multi-use transition districts. We're looking at phasing that, at least that term out of the new comprehensive plan. And again, neighborhood business as a zoning category is still going to remain, but we haven't looked specifically at this individual node. As you know, we had three specific area plans we've been looking at, and the majority of those were on the west side of Step Island, so this isn't one that we've looked at a specific area plan in great detail at this point. So to that end, I don't have a good answer, other than that comprehensive plan designation is probably going to be phased out.
Does that help?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm kind of in agreement with it, there's, still seems to be a little too many factors, I think, that are kind of left up in the air, and I think maybe if those were determined, like, is it going to be senior living, and if so, I think there's some additional things that need to be done to the units to accommodate that. Is it going to be sold? Is it going to be rental? I think those two ideas are going to make a big difference in the quality of that area and what it does to the, the single-family homes around it. So I don't know, and I'm not saying that I specifically want to reject this, but I don't know if there's a way we can maybe get those things kind of cleared out before we give an approval, or add something when they're on the map.
Well, we were just told we can't force them to put a deed restriction in, or anything like that. We could, correct me if I'm wrong, please, but we could table a vote for more, pending more information on those questions that we don't feel like we have sufficient answers to.
You can always table something. I don't know if that, or that would be all the issues or anything, but-
Short of outright denying it, I mean, we could, we could postpone voting on it, hoping to get the clarification on something.
Those issues, as well as the buffering machine and stuff, I think those really should be part of what we approve or not approve.
Mr., the other Mr. Allen, would you like to come forward and make some comments on our comments?
Could I make a comment while he's coming in?
Sure.
I just want to reiterate what he said, though, as far as who's living in it, isn't going to change the appearance of how they're looking from the outside of looking, being maintenance-provided. I think we need to keep that in mind as well, when we're talking about who's going to live in.
The, a few comments, I'll try to address some of the things that are still questions in the commission's mind. The first is on the senior living. That was just by way of explanation to the commission of what we are going to try to do with the project. We, but we are not going to limit it to, if a family comes in, or like I said, somebody in their 40s or 30s and says, "We want to live here," we're not going to exclude them from living there. And I don't think the commission would want us to just arbitrarily start refusing residents who would otherwise be acceptable citizens of the community to come in and live in this project. That's not the intent of what we want, I don't believe that's the intent of what the commission wants. So I think maybe our, by way of description, to, to explain to you, it's, we're, what we are thinking the type of resident that will live there is senior, has kind of thrown some of you, or most of you, off track, and I think it might be easier just to say it's, they're two fam, two-unit buildings, and the, with the commensurate, as, as Mr. Graham pointed out, maintenance provided there. It's not going to matter who's living inside that unit, whether it's a senior person, or whether it's a family of five, what have you. The outside of the buildings will be maintained exactly the same. They'll all be provided with repainting, roofs, gutters, all the landscaping, mowing, trees, everything. They'll all look the same regardless of who's living in it, whether they're 65, or 45, or 35, whatever it is, whether they have a family or just two people. So I'm, I'm hoping that, and I'm a little dismayed that by what I've put in here has kind of thrown you all off track, and it was certainly not my intention, I was just trying to, by way of explanation, to say that's who we think will be most inclined to come live in these units. As far as the-
The buffering around the project?
The, as, as it's been pointed out by staff, the ordinance doesn't require, if this were commercial, yes, you're going to have to build buffers, you're going to have to build fences and those kinds of things to screen it from the residential. But because we have gone to the very, the, the next level from single-family residential is two-family residential, we've gone to that zoning, it's as far down as you can go away from commercial, other than just build single-family residences. We don't want to create some type of, we want this particular piece of ground to integrate with the subdivision, as opposed to a strip center which has no integration, it's going to be buffered like a prison. That's not what we're wanting to do. We want this to be thought of and appear to be part of the overall subdivision. So we're not wanting to build fences and try to set it off as a, as I say, as some type of prison type of mentality where it's an albatross. We have not put connecting streets over into the adjacent subdivision, so there won't be no traffic coming from these 11 buildings over to the adjacent subdivision, it'll all go out on Moreland School Road. And it's, that, I hope, gives you a better sense of what we're trying to accomplish with the project, and the buffering scenario. The, as I said before, the, we can, we could get rid of that 20, that extra 25-foot buffering and move Lot 3 over so there'd be no, the decks wouldn't be in that last 10 feet, we would have 30-foot front yards on Lots 3 and 7, and it'd just be your, I mean, you'd just do away with whatever trees we could save in that 25-foot buffer, and we wouldn't need any PRO concept plan. So we're, we're just, we're approaching it trying to make it what we think will be the, it, it's not really any benefit to us, other than making the project look nicer. We just think it's the right thing to do. So I'll be glad, if you had any more specific questions, I can't remember, oh, the, the question was brought up about the, the size of the units, and it is 850 square feet per unit, so the buildings will be in size 1,700 square foot minimum on the main level, the adjacent homes are 1,600 square feet, deed restriction, so, in size, and classification as well, the city-approved classification. So the buildings are going to be the same size as the houses adjacent to them. It will be just that these buildings have two units in them instead of one, from the appearance on the outside, they're going to have the same architectural features, et cetera. So the same architectural style, same materials, those types of things. Is there any-
Any other comments?
-specific question?
Okay.
Well, I just have a question-
Yes.
... regarding the comprehensive plan.
Oh, yes.
You were the original developer of the project.
Right.
You originally had this zoned neighborhood business. Now, all of a sudden, you're asking for the change in zoning, which I believe would be inconsistent with what the comprehensive plan is. And, and I guess my follow-up question is, is that is because of the lack of interest in this property, due to maybe a lack of rooftops at this point, and once the development, the residential development occurs around it, there would be greater interest in that as a commercial property?
Well, I'll start most recently and go back. It didn't just happen overnight, all of a sudden. It's been seven years that we've waited and tried to sell the property as commercial with no interest. So it wasn't something that happened all of a sudden. The original subdivision approval, as Lauren pointed out, I believe I'm correct, the entire farm was in the comprehensive plan designated commercial, neighborhood business or some?
Not all of it, but a significant portion from the northwest and east side.
So a much bigger chunk than this four acres was going to be commercial, under the, well, designated for commercial, under the comprehensive plan at that point in time. And we brought it in, our original intent was for everything to be residential, including this four-acre tract. But because of the way the comprehensive plan was done with this much larger area of commercial on this farm, what resulted out of the discussions, negotiations, and all the work was that that much, oops, I'm sorry, that much larger tract of commercial was narrowed down to a four-acre node on this corner, not by our choice, but by trying to keep with what the comprehensive plan had called for at that spot. So we all along wanted it to be residential, but again, because of the comprehensive plan, that four acres was what was preserved for commercial, and it just didn't work.
In the original subdivision plan that we approved, there was a four-acre tract on both sides of Moreland.
That's correct, yeah, we-
And several years ago- And several years ago, we went back and rezoned the other side of the street. So, there is a history there of undoing that node.
Right, right. I'd forgotten that, actually. That's true. There were two four-acre tracts or approximately, the one on these side was approximately four acres as well, just...
Yeah, they were massive.
Couple of companion tracks and we, I think that was in '08 where we, or '09, where we came back and, no, I think it was '08 where we came back and said, "Well, residential makes more sense here," and some traffic issues and so forth with commercial and how much traffic gets dumped out in that intersection on top of what's already flowing through there, so...
My other question, when you did that, converted back over to residential, did you reduce the size of homes? Or are they same style of homes in the regular area on the other side of Adams Dairy Parkway?
On the other side, there are 1,400 square-foot homes.
Okay.
So, they're smaller. They're smaller than what's on the east side. And smaller lots, too. We had a variance that granted 60-foot wide lots in there.
But they were homes, not duplexes?
They were single-family, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And that's the area that's currently actually developed on that side of the street?
Right. That's where there's...
Where all the show, the model homes are.
Five or six homes in there right now on that particular cul-de-sac. We did the same thing there, put in a cul-de-sac on that tract, very similar to this, only this one dumped, comes out onto Moreland School Road where that one comes out on the Monterey Drive because you couldn't put another intersection, you couldn't put another curb cut on Moreland School Road on the east side so close to Adams Dairy Parkway, so...
Any other comments or questions on the record?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you again.
I'm sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
But the maintenance provided, is that, is that in here says that they will do that?
It will be in...
Or is it just in a letter saying that we're going to do it?
It will be in the...
Deed restrictions.
Deed restrictions, and that would be in the, in a different area that hasn't, that doesn't include it in what we're looking at tonight. Okay. Close the public hearing. And first, we'll take up item number four, which is the actual rezoning of the property. And I would entertain comments or motions on that issue.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Graham.
I would move for approval of the rezoning for Parkway Villas, case number RZ-12-13-4228.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Planning Commissioner Sanders?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Commissioner McCall?
Aye.
Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Commissioner Duhan?
Aye.
Commissioner Banks?
No.
Commissioner Trosen?
No.
Commissioner Abbott?
No.
Commissioner Wallace?
No.
Chairman Billups?
Aye.
And so, we will recommend approval of that rezoning to the city council. We move on to item number five, which is the planned residential overlay district concept plan.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Graham?
I would move for approval of the, the concept, where is it? The planned residential overlay concept plan for Parkway Villas, case number PROC-12-13-4229, subject to the staff for recommendations. And is that the one on number four we have to add if there is not already an approved stormwater plan in place?
Yes.
Yes. I have a motion. I am not getting a second. Do I have another motion?
We can make a motion, approve it, and then vote on it.
Are you asking if we can amend his motion? Can certainly move to amend his motion if that's what you'd like.
Well, Mr. Chairman, to get it on the table, a decision to be made, I'll second the motion so that we can go ahead and be there affirmative or...
And take a vote. Thank you, Mr. Trosen. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Planning Commissioner Haney?
No.
Commissioner McCall?
No.
Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Commissioner Duhan?
No.
Commissioner Banks?
No.
Commissioner Trosen?
No.
Commissioner Abbott?
No.
Commissioner Wallace?
No.
Commissioner Sanders?
No.
Chairman Billups?
Aye.
Okay, well, the PRO overlay concept plan will go to the council without our recommendation. And now, we move on to the final plat, preliminary, I'm sorry, the preliminary plat. And do we have a motion on that? The motion could be to deny it if that's what the council or the commission wants to do.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Banks.
I'll make a motion to deny the Parkway Villas preliminary plat PP-12-13-4230 with the eight staff conditions that are included.
I second.
Have a motion and a second to deny this preliminary plat. All those in favor of denying, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So, that preliminary plat has been denied. Okay. We move on to item number seven, which is a master alternative sign plan for Blue Spring siding and windows. Mr. Hawley.
Thank you.
Thank you. This request again is approval of a master alternative sign plan for a new pole sign along the Interstate 70 corridor. The address of the property is 2201 Northwest Jefferson. It's located approximately 500 feet west on Northwest Jefferson Street from Northwest Jefferson Street and the Northwest Jefferson Court intersection. This lot's approximately 7.76 acres and it is zoned general business. The applicant is proposing a new pole sign to be placed in the interstate in the I-70 corridor. The sign will be 35 feet in height, that meets the code, and have a sign face of 120 square feet. Again, that also meets the code for a pole sign. The pole will be set back from the property line approximately 12 and a half feet, and the leading edge of the sign will be five feet from the property line. Again, those do meet the city's code. The code allowance for the property is 2.25 square feet of sign area is allowed per linear feet. And this particular property has 167 linear feet of right-of-way. It allows approximately 375 square feet of signage. The applicant is proposing approximately 238 square feet, excuse me, again, meeting the city code. They did not submit a landscape plan with this particular sign proposal, and landscaping is required by Section 501-110, roughly three feet around the base of the sign with low growing shrubs and ground covers. Staff does recommend approval of the master alternative sign program with three conditions as noted in the staff report. And with that, I'll stand for questions.
Are there any questions for staff?
Mr. Hawley, is this sign in the same spot the original sign was that came down?
It is not. The original sign came down on, let's see, I think the east side of the drive, and this sign will be located on the west.
Okay.
Hope I have those directions right. I can't remember, but it's the other side of the driveway. Wherever the original one was, this is going on the other side of the drive. I think that's correct.
So, because it's been moved, that the issue of the site triangle, we don't have any past evidences whether that would be an issue or not, is that...
No, and with the pole sign, the site triangle is not, not...
Wasn't that one of the things that I read in here, that there was a question about site triangle on this sign, or was that something else? No, I'm sorry, that was something else.
Yeah.
That was on, another item down here. Never mind.
Okay. Thank you.
Get my bearings, too. Any other questions for staff? Okay, thank you, Mr. Hawley. Would the applicant like to come forward and make a presentation?
I'm just representing, actually, the sign manufacturer. My name's El Jalong. I don't really have a whole lot to say. The only thing I did notice, Mr. Hawley, you said something about the signs on the west side of the driveway? It's actually on the east side.
So, the original sign is on the west?
No, the original sign is on the east. There's a framework still there.
Oh, so it could be on the same side?
Same side. It's just we're going to remove the one that's there because it's not a very good sign, put a new one in. Other than that, I'm here for questions.
Are there any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. Any comments, motions?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Blue Spring Siding and Windows Master Alternative Sign Plan ASP-11-13-4193. Let the, excuse me, three staff conditions, excuse me.
And I second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That master sign plan has been approved. And we move on to items number eight and nine, which is a preliminary and final plat for the Parkway, formerly known as Adams Dairy Senior Community. Mr. Hawley.
Thank you. Make sure I got the right map up there. Yeah, as stated, this is a request for approval of a preliminary plat and a recommendation, excuse me, of approval for the final plat for development now being called the Parkway, located at 701-745 Northwest 7 Highway, and this one is on the west side of northeast Adams Dairy Parkway, south of northeast Arty-Mize Road, and north and east of northeast Napoleon Drive. The entire lot is approximately 13.6 acres, and the applicant is proposing three lots. The property is zoned general business with the, within the Adams Dairy Parkway overlay By way of background information, there is, there is a host of information provided under previous actions and approvals, but the most pertinent is that a planned unit development concept plan was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission on June 10th for the assisted living facility, and it was approved by the city council on June 17th. It was also reviewed by the Appearance Review Committee. Again, that's just by way of reference. The applicant has submitted for a planned unit development final plan as well as site plan and design review. However, at this point, they have requested that that particular application be held to the January, or, excuse me, to the February 24th, 2014 Planning Commission meeting in order for them to resolve some of the, some of the items that were discussed in our development review meeting, and particularly, in particular, I think, let's see, they were, they're looking at whether or not they might want to put balconies on the three-story building, and that had such an impact on the appearance of that three-story building that, as we talked about, they said, "Well, you know what? We really want to see whether or not we want to do that." As well, they may be looking at putting a basement underneath it for some storage. That has some implications with structural components, and so, they wanted some time to evaluate that and see whether it was economically feasible and how that would look. So, they requested to postpone that. Excuse me, the applicant is proposing three lots on this particular project. The lot for the assisted living facility will consist of about 9.4 acres, and then there is a 2.05 acre lot and a 2.08 acre lot, both of which will be used for a commercial or office use. There is some interest, staff has been contacted, there is some interest in doing a medical office building on one or both of those lots. Quickly going through this, access to the, to Lot 1, of course, will be from northeast Napoleon Drive. The parking that has been shown to date is provided in carports and open parking lots. There's roughly 35 covered spaces, and then there's additional spaces up to about 80 spaces that are provided throughout the site, with the majority being located east of the, east of the building, near the buffer between the buildings and Adams Dairy Parkway. Lot 2 and 3, we do not know where the access will be. What we do know is that it will absolutely be on northeast Napoleon Drive. Those will be defined during the final plat and PUD plan for Lot 2 and 3. The applicant will be required to install sidewalk along northeast Napoleon Drive and provide repairs to the hike bike trail located on the west side of northeast Adams Dairy Parkway. We have discussed a letter of credit to do that in lieu of installation prior to approval of the final plat. They're in the process of preparing that letter of credit. However, as of the date of this hearing, I have not received that letter of credit. Before that goes forward to the city council for the final plat, we will have to have that letter of credit provided to us. Preliminary and final stormwater study's been provided and reviewed by the Public Works Department. Street improvements, again, the street improvements that are there, excuse me, the street improvements that are existing are completed, street improvements, so there will not be any required with this particular preliminary or final plat. When lots 2 and 3 come forward with their final plat, there may need to be signalization at the corner of northeast Napoleon Drive and northeast Adams Dairy Parkway. It will be evaluated when those final plats come forward. Failed to neglect, but at a key point of this, the final plat is only for Lot 1, for the assisted living facility. So, when those two lots that are located at the corner come through, if the traffic report or traffic study suggests that that signalization is needed, it will be evaluated at that time. Staff is recommending approval of the preliminary plat and recommending, for a recommendation of approval for the final plat for Lot 1 with six conditions. And I will stand for any questions.
Do we have any questions for the staff on this issue?
Just clarification. The preliminary plot approval is for lots 2 and 3?
Yeah, the preliminary plots is for Lot 1 through 3. The final plat is only for Lot 1 at this time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hawley. Thank you. Would the applicant like to come forward?
Denise Matheson with O'Reilly Development would like to hand the letter of credit. For the record, we've complied with that. I'm available for any questions if you have any, otherwise I have nothing more to add.
Are there any questions for the applicant? Are there any questions for the applicant?
It's this senior housing. Being the only senior citizen up here.
Thank you. All right. First, the preliminary plat for lots 1 through 3. Could we have a motion, please, or more comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Graham?
I would move for approval of the preliminary plat for the Parkway, case number PP-11-13-4195. Yes, because there is the final.
With the six recommendations?
With the six staff recommendations.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Can I have a second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that preliminary plat has been approved. Now, we'll go on to the final plat for Lot number 1.
I would move for approval of the final plat for Lot number 1, PF-12-13-4233.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Do I have a second?
Second.
You have a second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that final plat will go on to the council with our recommendation. We have one more item left. It is, we've been here almost two hours, and I'm wondering if perhaps we should take a short break for just a minute, because I have a feeling this is going to take a little bit longer to go through. What do you think?
I think I can make it quick.
Rather large development here, I...
All right, I'm okay.
I'm willing to stick around if everybody else...
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead. The last thing on the agenda, items 10, 11, and 12, the site plan and preliminary and final plats for Benton House of Blue Springs. Ms. Grasshoff?
All right, this one is also senior housing.
Thank you.
All right, there are three applications for the Benton House of Blue Springs. There is the site plan design review, as well as preliminary and final plat. The property is located at 1701 Northwest Jefferson. It's at the northeast corner of Northwest Jefferson Court and Northwest Jefferson Street. That's immediately west of the Blue Springs School District Paul Consiglio Building. The property is a one-lot subdivision. It's approximately 9.86 acres, and it is currently zoned service office. The proposed development is for a 51,200 square foot assisted living facility, and that will include 73 dwelling units. And there are two phases for the proposed project. The first phase includes construction of 42,000 square feet with 59 dwelling units. The second phase is 9,200 square feet with an additional 14 dwelling units, and that addition is proposed at the northwest corner of Phase 1. So, this will be Phase 1. It's kind of hard to see, but here, they've indicated Phase 2 future addition, so that would be located in this area here. The applicant is also, again, seeking three applications tonight. If they, currently, there's 60 parking spaces proposed, and 59 are required. That 73 parking spaces are required once Phase 2 rolls in. The UDC requires one parking space per dwelling unit. Again, they're proposing 60, and they do not, at this point, intend to add the 73 parking spaces. So, if they do not meet that minimum parking requirement, they will have to get a variance. And that would just be prior to construction of Phase 2. So, Phase 2, they can proceed with these approvals, or Phase 1, they can proceed with these approvals. There's one access drive proposed for the site. It's located on Northwest Jefferson. There are no street improvements required, and no traffic was, traffic study was required due to the low traffic impacts of the development. And the applicant has indicated that they will seek the variance application, just because the use, they have several of these facilities, and they've found that the use does not require as much parking as our UDC requires. So, they have stated that they will intend to apply for the variance, but have not to date. There is a resident visitor drop-off pickup driveway located on the front of the building. There's also one loading space located behind the building, as required. There's a five-foot sidewalk that is required along Northwest Jefferson Street, the entire extent. That sidewalk must be installed or financial guarantee submitted prior to City Council approval of the final plat. There's also an interior sidewalk that runs along the south and east sides of the building for some pedestrian circulation on the interior of the site. As far as the phasing, we just, if there are significant changes to layout of the site, which we do not anticipate, significant changes to exterior building materials with Phase 2, we would just, it might have to go through site plan design review approval for Phase 2, but we do not anticipate that occurring. They have submitted a lighting plan, and it is in conformance with the outdoor lighting standards. I believe earlier, which Mr. Chairman was addressing, was there's a monument sign proposed on the west side of the driveway, and then there's also, it's like a decorative fence that matches kind of the monument sign, but it's not an actual sign. It has, it's made of brick and stone veneer. We've just noted that there is some concern with the site triangle requirements with both the fence and the monument sign, and we're just going to verify the location of those signs and the fence when they go through, prior to issuance of building permit and the sign permit for the monument sign. Screening, the applicant has indicated there's no roof mounted equipment. Screening of all ground level equipment has to be done so 100% from view, from public right-of-way and residential zoning district, which the only residential district adjacent to this property would be to the north. Ground level equipment will be screened using landscaping, but it'll also be reviewed with the building permit application. The trash enclosure is proposed in the kind of northeast corner of area they're going to develop. It will be located behind a screen wall on all sides with a gate on the southern portion of it for access. It does meet the UDC requirements as far as matching the building materials. The landscape plan, they have met the landscaping, the UDC landscaping requirements. Much of the northern buffer requirements will be fulfilled with existing plantings, and also they'll be using some existing trees in the storm detention area that will not be disturbed with any development on that side of the site. So, we are just asking that with, they meet those minimum requirements, and then upon installation of landscaping, they submit a letter certifying compliance with the approved landscape plan. And they have proposed to replace any of the existing trees that will be disturbed with the same amount of plant units. Stormwater detention, a preliminary stormwater report has been submitted. An existing detention basin is located on the eastern half of the site. It will be, it does currently serve as some stormwater detention for the site, but it's not developed. So, they will be making modifications to that, to that stormwater runoff area. A detailed stormwater management study must be submitted for Public Works Department review and approval prior to issuance of a building permit. And then also, in order to maintain some of the existing stormwater drainage properties on the site, they've limited much of the development to the western portion, as you could see. But with that, they've added, I don't believe it's 14 feet all the way around, but portions of this retaining wall are going to be 14 feet in height. So, due to safety concerns, we've requested that they add either a minimum four-foot-tall fence or similar barrier constructed of steel tubular rails, or wrought iron be provided either on the retaining wall or immediately adjacent to it, to the west, to make sure that there's no accidents. With that, oh, let me find the building elevation. As far as building design, they've used a variety of different design elements, as well as materials. The building materials include brick veneer with a band of stone veneer along the base of the walls, and surrounding several window features along the south for the front elevation. They've used cream-colored stucco along the roof line and above the brick, as well as on several of the portico elements. There are gabled dormer features, which do provide visual interest in the southeast and west elevations along the roof line. Shutters are used to enhance the windows. In the front of the building boasts an extended portico to highlight the building entryway, as well as provide the covered drop-off area. Porticos are also featured on the east and west wing, so on this side, with the main entryway in the middle. And then two cupolas, or towers, so that would be those features, extend vertically from the roof at the center of the building, which also add to the variation of scale of the, an overall visual interest. With that, staff recommends site plan design review approval with the nine conditions, and preliminary and final plat approval with four conditions. And I will take any questions.
Do we have any questions for staff on this issue? I don't think so.
Okay.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to come forward and make their presentation, please?
I'll run, so we don't have to do here all night.
I appreciate you waiting patiently through this long evening for us. Don't, don't, don't scrimp, just because it's getting a little bit...
Hi, good evening. My name is Brenner Holland. I'm with Hunt Midwest. I think the first thing I'll point out is the actual application was made in the name of CenterPoint SLP. I think in the front of the staff comments, it says Hunt Midwest, but it's CenterPoint SLP. And CenterPoint is a partnership between Hunt Midwest and Principal Senior Living Group. Principal is the group that will be operating the facility. They have done probably 20, 25 facilities throughout the country. One of their owners is Kyle Dykman out of Lee Summit, which is how we kind of hooked up and came into partnership. What you'll see on the front of what I just handed out there was this community, the Benton House community, would be our fifth in the city. We've got three that are open right now, one in Lee Summit on Highway 50, just east of Todd George Road, and the hospital down there. We have one in Prairie Village, Kansas. We have one up in Liberty and Shil Creek there. And then we're just started construction today on one up in the Zona Rosa area, up by the airport. So, I think what that brings for us as a developer, and hopefully for you as a city, is a little bit of comfort levels, you know, we're not guessing here. We use the same site plan. We generally use the same building materials. We've had Meyer Brothers Building Company build each one of these, and so as we go into a community, we kind of know our budget, we know what the costs are going to be, and then those budgets just kind of vary based on different site conditions. But generally, the concept is it's assisting, assisted living and memory care. It's about a 42,000 square foot building in our first phase. It's 59 units. Approximately 12 of those would be memory care, that has their own dedicated courtyard, and is a secure facility. And then the rest of it is assisted living, also has its own dedicated courtyard. And you can see in the pictures, pretty highly amenitized, common area, common dining room, kind of a, what we call a country kitchen, where families can come in with their parents or grandparents and make cookies, or make breakfast, or the residents can come down and get meals, make their own meals, kind of off of the regular meal schedule. As with most assisted living, there's a back of house that has a commercial kitchen. The facility is fully sprinkled, and, you know, one of the things that we like about our partnership with Principal Senior Living is that really, the number one thing about the facility is care of the seniors first, and then, you know, in this business, if you take care of the seniors, the, you know, everything else takes care of itself. Phase 2 would be a 9,200 square foot addition on that northwest corner. There would be additional memory care, what we've found so far in the first three that we opened. A little bit scary for me, but the memory care is what filled up first. And we're actually on all three of those, pursuing the expansion areas right now, already, and a couple have been open less than a year, so that would be what the Phase 2 is. You know, you kind of see on the outside, they are, they're stone, they're stucco, they're brick. We spend a lot of time on that detail and really don't try to scrimp there. Those are all low-maintenance materials. We don't want to be back in painting or anything anymore than we have to. We do have the cupola, kind of, it's a trademark-type issues for this project, with the portico chair in the front, and the cupola on the top, we think helps set off the building from the, some of the competitors. You know, I think the senior housing I just saw in here is kind of a theme in your meeting tonight, and has been really kind of across the metro. It's a, it is a high-growth area, and, you know, Eastern Jackson County is an area that's been underserved, I think is why you're thinking of attention here right now. In fact, is, in Missouri, you might be aware, you have to go through the certificate of need process through the state before you can put beds into a given location. We actually got our certificate of need, the final approval, this morning in Jefferson City for this site. So, from that standpoint, we're kind of geared up and ready to go. It would be our intent to take through the building plans immediately, try to get into construction here, you know, this summer. Usually takes about a year, year to build the project. Just kind of going through, again, you know, it's, it's a project that, you know, you can touch and feel in other places, one that we're very comfortable building and constructing, and knowing that it's going to turn out, like we say, it's going to turn out. And, you know, I think we have a pretty good track record as Hunt Midwest and our partners in delivering what we're, what we say we're going to deliver. I brought with me David Matthews from Luchon Engineering, who's our design firm. David's got some other maps, and let me grab the elevation. We put that up earlier, but you can see on the elevation, this would be the front, the entryway, the circle drive and the portico chair for a drop-off area. We also provide a van and meals for the residents. So, you know, pretty common amenities for an assisted living. It is all private pay. There's no Medicare, Medicaid involved. People can have insurance, long-term insurance that they can use, but other than that, it is, it is all private pay. And talking about the site, we've really tried to play, pay a lot of attention to keeping as many of the trees as we could in place, specifically along the north boundary, which is the only boundary that abuts residential areas. There are, I know there's some discussion about the difference between scrub trees and some old growth trees. On that north property line, there is some old growth trees that we really want to protect and make sure they stay in place. In the detention pond itself, we're going to try to leave all the trees that are actually within kind of the creek of that detention pond. Per staff comments, we'll have to go in and make some adjustments to detain the water that we generate on the site, so that we don't put any additional water into the stream. And as we bring our stormwater plan in, we're also going to add some BMPs. That was the last discussion that we had with Ben and Jim, and we appreciate their input. We're going to add some BMPs in our, the drainage swales that kind of surround the building, try to help with some water quality as well. So, those are just kind of some of the points. We are going to put the sidewalk in the front. We realize we have to have that letter of credit or other means to guarantee that in before the council, and so we'll get that done next week. But with that, we keep it short and sweet. If you have any questions, we can get into a lot more details.
Do we have any questions for the applicant? Well, I know it's kind of late, and I hate to get into a whole lot of it, but I, the plan that we were given, of course, was shrunk way, way down.
Sure.
It doesn't expand very well on this. Can you tell me a little bit about the individual units that inside the... Can you tell me a little bit about the individual units that inside the development? I mean, are they full-fledged apartments or are they? Because it looks like some of them are two rooms. Some of them look more like studios. I can't really tell if they've got kitchens in them at all.
Right. No, that's a good point. I should have kind of led with it. They're roughly, the smallest are roughly 330 square feet and they'll go up to almost 550 square feet. There's no full kitchen in them. There's a little kitchenette with a microwave and a smaller refrigerator that's in the unit. Again, there's a full commercial kitchen, so all the meals are provided. There's a dining room with seating for everyone in the community, so they come out and take their meals, or they, you know, or they can take them back to their rooms as well. There's, you know, full ADA bathrooms, you know, usually with the assisted living. The reason somebody's in assisted living is because they're having problems with one of, you know, five main life events. So they're staffed up. Generally, we'll have 35 to 40 employees for this building, kind of depending on how that phase goes in. Memory care is a little more intense as far as staffing, but that staff is there to give help with medications or ambulatory help to get from their rooms to the dining areas. You know, big social kind of calendar and that sort of thing. But the rooms themselves are, assisted living, the rooms are a little bit larger. They're more like small apartments without the full kitchen is really the only difference. Full shower, full bath. The memory care units are actually kind of interesting is they're smaller and on purpose, we don't put closets in the memory care units. They're all done with armoires, all their clothes that can go in there, because really the idea is with the memory care residents, you want them out and social and not staying in their room all the time. So a lot of effort, the design on memory care also is from the common area. Staff can stand in the common area and see every front door of the memory care, every front door of each apartment, so they can know where those residents are and making sure that they're taking care of them. And then again, you know, another strong feature of the site is the, is the two courtyards. The assisted living facility has its own courtyard and the memory care has a courtyard that is controlled and secure as well, but that the residents can get out and get outside. There's some raised planters, some benches, that sort of thing, so.
On what I think here, or I'm looking at here, is the memory care area. Are some of those shared rooms?
They can be shared, absolutely. We have 50, in phase one, for instance, we have 59 units throughout the building. There's 12 memory care. Now, the memory care, what we've found in Kansas City, that their setup, they could all be double occupancy. But generally in Kansas City, they have not been. They've been mostly single occupancy. In the whole community, we're running with the 59 units across the three that we have open, generally about 63 to 65 people in the whole, in the facility. So, you know, there's seven or eight couples is usually what happens, it ends up together. One of them might have a memory care issue. One of them might have just some ambulatory problems, and so they would come into the facility together. Also, sometimes in the memory care, though, people will put a grandparent or a parent in and they will have a roommate situation. It's more common in the memory care than it is in the assisted living.
Are there any other questions?
What's the cost range going to be?
Generally, for the assisted, it varies depending on the services needed, but I think on the low end, probably 32, 3,300 a month to start, and then that would go up to the memory care, probably in the 5,000 range per month. Sounds very expensive, but remember, you know, that's all your utilities, your meals, your housing. Most, most of the residents, you know, don't have a car, which is something I also should have talked about, but the, we will be applying for the VZA for the variance for the parking because people in our facilities that have cars usually have them for a year or two when they come in. I think the highest amount of cars we've had for the residents has been five. They just don't, and those people usually bring them in just for a sense of independence, that they wanted to bring their car with them, but they rarely use it. So the parking is just, hasn't been an issue. You know, we, the only time the parking gets fully utilized is at Thanksgiving or the grand opening that we have at the, at the very beginning. So, you know, the parking is just something that, you know, is just not needed. It's not needed to have all that impervious area either that just takes up green space and has to be maintained and have to put, push snow off of. But just wanted you guys to know that we will be applying for that VZA approval.
Any other questions?
You may have already covered it. Do you have like a skilled care unit?
No, we do not. There's no skilled, no. It's a separate licensure. You know, there, there has been a trend where people have been coming in and doing the CCRCs where they have, you know, independent living, assisted memory care and skilled together. We don't provide that service.
Anything else? All right. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Okay. First, we need to take up the site plan design review and nine staff recommendations. Oh, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. My name is David Matthews with Luchon, Angus Brenner Holland mentioned we're the consultants working with them. Before you take up the matter, first we'd be happy to answer any further questions, but it doesn't appear there are any. But on condition seven, and I spoke briefly to staff and I think they're okay with this, on the fence or the barrier, we would just like to, instead of specifying the specific height, have it say per building code, because sometimes there can be differences based on the situation.
That's recommendation seven you said?
Yeah.
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
And just want to, for the record, under the architect, we aren't the architect, it's Mark Lamas out of, who's out of Georgia, who's actually doing the building design, just as a point of clarification. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now I'll bring it back up here. And again, we will start with the site plan design review and the nine recommendations. Any comments? Any motions?
What's the disposition of seven? Item seven, I want four more foot on top of 14 foot.
Remove the minimum four-foot requirement and instead just change it to per building code.
How does the building code read on something like that?
I don't know the building code specifically, but I think it's probably based on at what height the retaining wall is. I don't know.
It seems that 14 foot is plenty high, but I don't know, maybe something...
Can't get over that, Joe?
Well, I think they're more worried about somebody falling off of it. It's a retaining wall.
But the ground goes to there.
And there'll be language in the IBC, I think it's the International Building Code Book on requirements for that wall, and that's what we want them to follow. Instead of the language, it's in the condition there. So we're asking.
So, so would you be okay with that change?
Makes sense, retaining on each side.
Yeah, no, it's a retaining wall. I would say I think this is a quality project. This is a good location for it. I think it may be the first of several that we see come through, so.
First time we've seen it.
First, first time we've seen this one, yes. We've talked about several units, several centers that had some of these elements, but this is the first one we've actually gotten into a site plan and design review on.
But this is not really a nursing home, although similar?
It does have, maybe you might want to answer this question better than me, because it doesn't have skilled care, so it doesn't have nurses on staff. But it does have orderlies and...
Right. Almost by default, we have, we do have nurses, but it's not required to have nurses. I think what you'd be called generally a nursing home would be the skilled type licensure. And our average age in the community, you know, I, before we got into this, I would have guessed it'd be the, you know, like 70, but it's about 83 or 84. And obviously, the longer you have the facility in place, that goes up, but in the three in Kansas City, it's about 83 or 84.
So this is permanent housing for them once they get there or not?
Yes. And in fact, is, you know, a lot of the skilled today is designed to get people out of skilled, whereas we used to put seniors into a skilled or a nursing home and they'd stay there for an extended period of time. You know, one of the goals for a lot of the, the quality skilled providers now is to, if they take somebody because they've had a fall or a condition that required them to go to the hospital, they go to the skilled for a period of time and they can actually come back to the assisted living or the, or, you know, or the memory care side, so. But we do, one of the big things we do as assisted living and memory care is that there's a patient evaluation every day, and there does reach a time at different points in somebody's life that they might have to move on to a skilled, because we don't have the medical type licensure to take care of those people. I will also say, you approved the billboard today. We're actually removing a big ground-based billboard on that site, too, so. It will look better as you drive down I-7.
Not a rehab facility or anything like that?
Uh, no, no, not at all. No, it's, these would be their permanent residence. It's just, you know, it's an apartment for seniors. I tell people I'd like to get some of my buddies and we'll all move in. It's three meals a day and y'all, it's kind of like a big fraternity house. And if you're male, it's really good because it's mostly females.
And this one is age-restricted, right?
Yes.
Sorry.
That's okay. Okay. On, now, back to the site plan design review. Any further comments and/or a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move...
Mr. Graham.
For approval of the site plan design review for Benton House, SPDR-12-13-4235, subject to the staff recommendations, number seven, being changed to state barriers in accordance with the building codes.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Site plan design has been approved. We move on to the preliminary plat.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval of the preliminary plat for Benton House, case PP-12-13-4236, subject to the four staff recommendations.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Final plat has been approved, I'm sorry, the preliminary plat has been approved and we are the final say on that. That's where I got the word final in there. And now we move on to the final plat.
I'll move for approval of the, of the, the final plat for Benton House, PF-12-13-4237, again with the four staff recommendations.
And I'll again second that.
And we have a motion and a second. And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that final plat will go on to the city council with our recommendation. All right. That being said, we move on to other business. Does anyone have anything they'd like to discuss this evening? Mr. Allen.
Mr. Chairman, I'll defer to Ms. Endora in terms of the agenda for next time, I believe. How much we have anything at the moment for January 27th?
No, we don't.
So...
And when's the cutoff on that?
Uh, last week, two weeks ago.
Oh.
So at the moment, we have nothing for the agenda. Again, your decision at this point, if you wanted to cancel that meeting at this moment, again, you've had, I think, equivalent of like three or four meetings. Based on what they've normally been, so.
I can remember, I can remember when they always used to be like this.
Sure. So, again, staff certainly is available if need be for the 27th, but with nothing on the agenda other than the minutes from tonight's meeting.
Well, with nothing on the agenda, unless somebody has a strong urge to meet, I would say we will not meet on the 27th.
Very good. We, that sounds great. We anticipate having some other items on February 10th, however, that agenda cutoff is this Friday. Same on February 10th would be the next Conference of Plans Steering Committee. So kind of have, once a month here, but be pretty loaded up. You know, one big meeting here in January, probably one in February. And as Jim had noted, the Parkway Senior Living is looking at that second meeting in February for the 24th. So this may be the only lull that you'll get for a little while on the 27th. Along with that, though, because we will not be meeting until February 10th, if there's any discussion at this point regarding the annual American Planning Association Conference, National Planning Conference, which is being held the end of, the last week of April in Atlanta. Early bird registration, which does actually equate to some significant savings, is right after that next planning committee meeting, the 10th. So can certainly wait to decide at that meeting, but between now and then, maybe tonight, there's a, you know, we, up to Mr. Chairman, if you want to do kind of names in the hat again, if we can do that on the 10th or sometime before then, or if there's somebody in particular that just wanted to take charge.
If there's anybody who is interested in going, especially those who have not been on a trip like this before.
I should note, your chaperones will be myself and our principal planner, Mike Peterman, if that makes any difference. I hope to be out of my crutches, yes, but it'll be, separate, separate living accommodations will be separate. Only chaperones and not...
So if there's anybody who has schedule availability and has an interest in doing that, you might let Scott or Karen know about that. And if we have multiple people with an interest, then we probably will do a name and a hat or something like that on that, at that meeting.
And, very good. Sorry, one more thing.
Yes.
We have, prior to the next meeting then, since we don't have the 27th, the first Tuesday in February, February 4th, again, just, it's been in the plan notes, kind of saved the date. I think an email even went out, that's the next Eastern Jackson County Planning Commissioners training, Tuesday, the 4th. Blue Springs is hosting. Independence is providing presenter, speaker, Steve Rhodes from Virio will be talking about different new trends in site planning, green solutions, things of that sort, kind of new up-and-coming trends, which would be a good fit as we look to the new conference of planning new UDC. They'll be at Lead Bank down South 7, Chapman Farms, nice facility there for a meeting. Again, it's, you know, 5 o'clock dinner, 6 o'clock presentation. I guess just let Karen know if you're able to attend as soon as possible. Again, Tuesday, February 4th.
February 10th?
Yes.
5 o'clock is...
Yes, 5 o'clock is, 5 o'clock, February 10th, so before the next planning committee meeting will be the steering committee for conference of plan.
Anyone else? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned.